I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the roll call. All members are present with the exception of Mr. Hanson and Mr. Sorensen this evening. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda for two items that were discussed earlier tonight at the Facilities and Long-Range Planning Committee and need to be addressed at the Board. They will be added as under new business on the facilities, planning, and construction. Number four will be added, and it's a follow-up to our discussion last week on scope 512 for the high school construction. And item number five will be added with some information about the middle school timeline With that motion and the amendment, do I have a second?
Second.
By Lee. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes 5-0. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. These items are considered to be routine in nature and can be enacted by one motion, and there's no separate discussion on any of these unless a Board member or citizen so requests. So, on tonight's consent agenda is the check wire transfer disbursement summary, the wire transfer EFT, ACH Banking, the building bond investment reports, the banking reconciliation statement, the approval of the School Board minutes from the meeting on September 10th and September 24th, the resignations, terminations, and non-renewal, the district curriculum advisory committee membership, and the assurance of compliance report. So, do I have a motion for the acceptance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Lee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes 5-0. Next on the agenda tonight is the resolution for the acceptance of gifts. Tonight we have gifts from Martha Muska, from the Five Hogs PTC, and from Boy Scout Troop Do I have a motion for the acceptance of the gifts this evening?
So moved.
By Melissa, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, this is a resolution, requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 That passes 5-0. Next on the agenda is the Laker Pride. Dr. Stallow will be presenting.
Good evening, everyone. We have a couple very special Laker Prides this evening. First of all, we are going to be recognizing a very important partnership in our community. So, at this point, I would like to invite members of the Prior Lake Rotary who are with us. Darcy Rose and Michelle Girff are here. They were the Lakefront Music Fest co-chairs. And volunteer coordinators, Jack and Mary Haugen and Sandra Crowe are going to also join us up here. Our partnership with Lakefront, or with the Rotary, first of all, is a longstanding system of support for our programs and our students throughout our district in numerous ways, from our ALC Strive students, the mentoring they do there, to an abundance of other activities that Prior Lake Rotary does to support our students. Tonight, we're here to receive and to thank the Prior Lake Rotary for their contribution to our PTCs, PAA, and LABC. And I'm going to hand the mic over to them to talk a little bit more about that. But, I want to, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. As a Prior Lake Rotarian who doesn't do an ounce of what these people in front of you do, for Music Fest or anything Rotary, I have so much gratitude for the support that you provide us, for the hours that you give to our community, and specifically to our school district, to make this event happen, and all the other things that you do throughout the year. So, thank you for that. Thank you for being here this evening, and I'm going to hand it over to you to talk a little bit more about it.
Thank you, Terry. We're excited to be here tonight. We love to give away money. I would love to have our PTC, LABs, or LABC, or NPAA come on up. The representatives. This money that we are giving to you guys, you guys did an amazing job. We can't be a successful event without your relationship with us, and we are so thankful to have all of the volunteer hours that you donate, the ticket sales that you provide for us, and it accumulated this year with all of the three groups to $40,182,000. Again, want to thank you very much. We hope that it helps, you know, provide a lot of opportunity for children in your programs, and we're looking forward to our 2019, 10 years, 12th and 13th of July. We're looking forward to our fun celebration. We hope again to have you guys back.
I just want to say, it was very powerful on last Wednesday when you all came to Rotary, and you shared with us the different ways that you're going to be using the money. And that was real important to the Rotarians, because we know we give the money, but to hear back how many kids you impact with the kinds of work that you do makes this all worth it for us.
I'd only make one comment. Over the nine years of the Music Fest, and the 10th year coming up, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we announced our headliner well in advance. But, we've been fortunate to give over six, nearly $600,000 to our nonprofit partners, all of you plus the River Valley YMCA, so we're really pleased with that.
Come on, get in there.
Need a picture.
Get a picture.
As if that wasn't enough, we have another celebration. One of the things that we did this year is we invited administrators to sign up for Laker Pride and to show some special recognitions of things that are happening specific to their buildings or their departments. So, tonight, we have staff from Grainwood that are here, and they're going to talk a little bit to us about their CARES program, their PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention Support Program, that has been amazing for 10 years, nine years, at Grainwood. And throughout the years, the CARES program and especially the staff have taken on this hero theme. They, as I was at Grainwood the opening day this year, doors were all decorated on superhero themes. I think their hashtag was, their hashtag is #HeroUp, I think that's right. And just the energy and the attitude of the staff to showcase their belief in kids, and that within each one of us, there's a superhero waiting to come out, was just absolutely amazing. And I think that speaks to the culture that they've created and the great things that they do. And right now, I would invite Patrick Glenn, Principal at Grainwood, and his staff to come up and talk a little bit about, more about their CARES program. Well, the CARES piece and what they're going to talk about is specific to Grainwood and to nine years of implementing. I do want you to know that we celebrate and implement PBIS throughout the district in all of our schools. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stallow, and School Board members. Thank you for letting us present just a little bit about what we do. So, she mentioned that our school is a PBIS school, Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support, and I know my colleagues are sitting out there, and we are all PBIS schools, which allow us to create a culture around what's important for kids. We believe so much in what we do on a daily basis to be able to meet their needs. I think if you come to Grainwood and you visit Grainwood, we have heroes throughout our building that are there serving kids all the time. Some of them wear T-shirts, like a C and an A and an R, and an E and an S, and there's a few other sidekicks that are involved in this as well. Our PBIS group is kind of a part of our problem-solving team. It's the same members. We meet weekly, and we meet multiple times throughout the summertime, and our responsibility is to really kind of make changes and adjust with student behavior and themes as they go along. This year is our Hero Up theme. And last year, we had Camp CARES. If you came to Grainwood last year, you would have seen logged cabin-themed things throughout the building. There are still some remnants, I think, on the walls, I notice every once in a while. Our goal this year really was to target the lunchroom, and we have been focused on making some updates that need to happen on expectations around our lunchroom. And we've really created a system to reward students that are demonstrating those expectations this year. If you were to come to Grainwood, you'd see this big chart on our wall that we're rewarding students that are demonstrating the expectations that we have revisited and changed throughout the summertime. But, we also do some things with kids, something that we've done, this'll be year two, year three, Laker Leaders. You want to tell us a little bit about that?
Hi, I'm Renee. I'm a school social worker at Grainwood. This is our awesome, some of our awesome team. So, about three years ago, this teacher right here, Michelle Perkins, came up with the awesome idea of creating a small group of 5th graders for us to focus on building their leadership skills. So, every year, they write an essay, the entire 5th grade class writes an essay, and based on that essay, as well as a sit-down discussion with their teachers about their behavior, there's a select group of 5th graders that are chosen that we focus all year long. They meet with me for teaching sessions all year long, and they kind of mimic our model of being heroes throughout the entire school. And it's just been really a powerful program that the kids just love, and now that it's in our third year, the younger kids look forward to applying for that position, and it's just been a real joy to be a part of, and we can just see them really taking some more ownership, and the younger kids looking up to them.
This is Lisa Olson. She's assertion. She's our intervention teacher at Grainwood, and Kelly Adrian is empathy. And I think Christine Dahlquist is self-control. No.
Unger.
Ms. Unger is self-control. We've had some changes along the way. You do rotate T-shirts every once in a while, depending upon who's in the building that day. So, it's become culture that people step up and really kind of go into the roles of our CARES superheroes. We are so excited to be able to be throughout the building and celebrate expectations that are there, whether it be in the hallway, on the playground, in the lunchroom. It really is a celebration of what I think positive school culture is all about, and really what we want for our students and our staff. So, kind of a big shout-out to them. So, thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight to share what we do on a regular basis. And I do ask, if you want to come by and see it in action, come by. That'd be awesome. So, thank you.
One of the things that I just want to add to what they said is, when we think about PBIS systems, you know, really what we're hoping to do is to create that culture where we look at student behaviors in the same way that we look at math. If students don't quite or haven't quite yet learned something in math, we make sure that we have supports in place and we have interventions in place, and we believe the same thing about behaviors, that kids don't come to us necessarily always knowing or remembering appropriate behavior. So, instead of punishing kids, we want to be sure that we're providing the supports, and that's what the PBIS programs do. So, thank you.
Next on the agenda tonight are candidates for, well, the personnel items, and for that, I'll hand it over to-
Fueling my thunder.
Director, Mr. Matt Mons. Sorry.
I would like to recommend the following candidates for employment, and I'm seeking Board approval.
Do I have a motion for the acceptance of the candidates for employment?
So moved.
By Lee, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary, are there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Lee.
Matt, on some of these, it says unsettled. Is that because it's still contract under negotiation, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Because they're various different areas, not all the same, so.
Sure. Yep. So, there's one agreement left, unsettled. Yep.
Okay.
And that will cover a number of different employee groups there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes 6-0, or 5-0, excuse me.
And next, I present the following leaves of absence, and I'm seeking Board approval.
Do I have a motion for the approval of the leaves of absence?
So moved.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
By Stacy, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes 5-0.
And next up, I'm presenting a staffing request in our educational support staff area, and we've got four to go through briefly here. First up is a building maintenance technician. This is a district-wide position, and just to note that this position was included in the development of our operating referendum, so this is something that we've been planning for as we move towards completion of projects and starting more of the work in the district. Next up is a child nutrition helper. This is a part-time position due to the number of students in the service being provided at Prior Lake High School. Then we have a .5 addition for an additional middle school girls tennis coach. That position is necessary due to registration within the program. And then, a boys assistant volleyball coach. We've seen significant growth in our boys volleyball program, which is new and neat to see it growing in the fashion that it is. And with that, I make the request.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the acceptance of the additional staffing for the 2018-19 school year?
So moved.
By Melissa, do I have a second? By Mary, are there any questions or comments? Go ahead.
Just on the assistant volleyball coach, was that, I thought that was a spring, was that in the spring sport, spring court? Or no, are they doing it, didn't we do it last spring?
So, that falls the other way. So, that is ongoing here. It's well-started, but I believe that that is a fall sport on the-
So, we did it in the spring?
The boys' side. Spring.
Okay.
We're well past it, and gearing up for next year, apparently.
Okay. All right. I just wanted, I just-
So, we're excited to bring you some continued boys volleyball offerings next year. And just one other quick note on that. The .5 that you see attached to that, we'll see attached to all of those, and that's because their season is half as long as most of our other sports.
Okay. I have had a motion. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I did.
Go ahead, Mary.
Matt, first of all, you know, I had sent in a whole bunch of questions about ECE, ECSE, et cetera, and thank you for answering. Jeff, thank you for answering those whoever sent them back. But, you know, with the new hires and things like that, I was curious to see if we are planning on hiring any additional counselors, given the ratios that were given back.
Any additional counselors?
Yeah.
At what level at the moment?
What, middle school?
I'm going to-
Because it's not, it's not, it's not having to do with this. I was just noticing-
I'm going to make a point of order that that's not part of the agenda-
Okay.
-tonight. So, if you wish to bring that back and have a discussion on the agenda, you can let myself and Dr. Stallow know that you'd like that discussion and a study session first.
Okay.
About, okay?
All right.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes 5-0. There's no unfinished business. Next on the agenda is the new business. First up, with the Facilities and Planning and Construction, Mr. Holberg.
And Mr. Delwo, and Mr. Martin, and team. Good evening, Chair Wolf, members of the Board. Dr. Stallow, we have several items tonight to, for Board consideration. We appreciate you amending the agenda. As you can see from the things we're going to be going through, we're in the midst of doing a lot of work and some things coming forward with bids and so forth, and so it's important as we continue to bring you the fresh information, the information that we have, that you're considering that and allowing us to bring that forward on the agenda. We really do appreciate that. One of the first things that's in your Board packet is the, is a memo and amendment for, between Prior Lake Savagery Schools and Prior Lake Aggregates. I'm going to spend a little time talking a little bit about it. You may recall back on October 27th, as a Board, you took action on the purchase agreement. And if you look at Exhibit C in the purchase agreement, you'll notice that there was a grading plan and a site plan that we had provided to Prior Lake Aggregates from the standpoint of negotiations. Since those negotiations had started last spring, we were looking at very preliminary layouts for our prospective new elementary school. And so, meanwhile, this summer, starting in, I think it was July or August, our design team started having conversations, coming together, and refined the plan of the building more tightly. Of course, we have the purchase agreement, but also, our design team has come forward with a, or leaning towards a particular site schematic or a site map that's more closely aligned to what we believe the final recommendation's going to be for the new elementary school. So, throughout this process, we've had really open lines of communication with Prior Lake Aggregates about the mining of the particular site and the reclamation of the hole that they are, that they're, you know, after their mine restoring. And one of the things that we were looking at in our conversations is, because this concept has adjusted, this, our building concept is really not going to be over the hole. We had spoken a lot about, in the earlier exhibit, from the purchase agreement, that the building concept was shifted farther north, it was a little bit larger in scope, and it was going to be over some of that area that was going to be reclaimed and used for a foundation of the new school. With this, what we were, when we started landing on this, Prior Lake Aggregates approached us and said, you know, given the north part of the overall site is where the hole is, and where your site is for the building concept is going to be, there really isn't going to be much reclamation in terms of fill. That area is actually higher than the elevation as part of the grading plan. So, they approached us by saying, if we look at different requirements that are listed in the amendment, it will increase from the standpoint timeliness of being able to restore the site, and it will also save the district some money in terms of designing that northbound road, 156, where it says future road, as well as rough grading of that road as well, which, as part of our planned referendum, planning, that those would have been expenses on the district. So, from PLA's side, they're able to use materials that are currently on-site and more readily available, and also suitable for grassy areas, also the parking lot or the north bus loop area and the ball field. And so, coming forward, they reached out to us and said, is this something that we can look at from an amendment standpoint and move forward with? So, that's what we have for you here this evening with the amendment. The area that we're talking about is, you'll see this dotted line that goes all the way across. This is the area that we're talking about for reclamation for the elementary site. And so, there's no excavation currently happening underneath the building concept, or we anticipate where the building will be. So, with that, there were some questions that were presented as far as, again, restoring the site. Our legal has been involved in this conversation, so has our partners from Nexus, Braun, Intertech. As the site is restored, we are going to have, as in our purchase, as in our purchase agreement, there will be monitoring and there will be making sure that the site is being restored to specifications throughout that process. So, with that, seeking-
With that, I will accept a motion for the amendment to the PLAS, PLA land agreement.
So moved.
By Lee, is there a second?
Second.
By Stacy, are there any questions or comments? Let's go first. Melissa?
Thank you. Just for clarification, was Prior Lake Aggregates originally using an elementary design that was more closely aligned to that of our newest buildings, like Redtail Ridge and Jeffers Pond?
No, we had looked at, we had looked at a similar scoped building that was a little larger. We were looking at from the standpoint of, if we're going to be making a judgment as far as what the size of the building would be, we used a bit of an oversized building from a previous project that Wold Architects and Engineers had recently completed, and it was shifted a little further north onto the property.
Have we considered a design like the Redtail Ridge or Jeffers Pond on that site?
So, currently, the Redtail Ridge, Jeffers Pond is a split level. This site is more conducive to a two-story elevation, and so, with the previous, I think in the Board meetings that we've had leading up to this, I know our elementary has very Jeffers Pond, Redtail Ridge components built into those designs, and so, that will be coming forward in later November.
Just for the sake of us that have driven up there, can you note where on this map, I know it's to the side, but where that new parking lot is, so that we can kind of get a fuller reference?
Sure. So, currently, this will be 156th. This is the new parking lot that's currently there. These are the ball, SS9 ball fields. You're asking me to show my artistic ability here?
But, yeah, but those aren't, those aren't there.
Is this really on display here?
Right. But, that's not, I mean, it's not flat ground right now, the SS-
No. No, no, no. They're in the process of restoring.
Right. So, but the parking lot is up there.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to note that. And then, I think we talked about this at FLIR, but that line seems very close to the school. It just, can you, like, go into more detail of really how close that is?
So, this, yes, the line looks very close to that part in blue, but this represents a 75-foot extension beyond what we anticipate the building is going to be designed to be.
So, there'll be 75 feet of more compact-
Right. Basically landscaping leading up to the building.
Okay. And then, as far as, like, a savings, do we have an idea of a savings?
So, we anticipate that the design savings will be about $30,000 to $35,000 benefit to the district. As far as rough grading the road, our engineer from Anderson Johnson, you know, his calculation was, you know, think a fully completed road with utilities and everything, all done is $400 a foot. That's certainly not what we're getting with this, but certainly we're getting a proportion. I would anticipate, you know, we've estimated approximately $80,000, maybe $100,000 of a benefit to the district through this amendment.
As a total?
As a total.
And then, as far as timeline scope, I mean, as far as the site being ready, tested, that kind of thing?
Yes.
What's the increase there?
So, the increase will be as they're using materials more readily on-site, so they'll be able to fill the hole where they've excavated, as well as compact it. Braun will be out there daily to look at the compaction efforts, as well as to do borings of the soil. Right now, the problem with restoring is the rain that we've been currently experiencing, so there hasn't been any work, I think toward the end of last week or even today, certainly with the rain. So, they're a little bit out of paws now, but once the rain stops and it starts to dry, they'll start putting and reclaiming the hole back again.
And then, so seasonally, we'll be able to experience winter with what's-
Yes.
-happening and then into the spring.
That's a great point. I mean, with, with the areas to the north here above this, you know, line that we're talking about, we're not anticipating any building or structures on that northern part. And so, this area, our first priority is going to be building the building. And then, that's going to take a period of time, but before we get to finalizing the site, this area's going to season about 16 to possibly 18 months before we actually, so it allows that to settle and it allows that to come to fruition. And then, the part in there, which was a question about putting material off- putting material off to the side. So on that northern bus loop, we're asking them to put that to a certain level and then stockpile the Class V aggregate to put that on there when we're more closely ready to put the pavement down for the road. So it will, or for that bus loop. So it will allow more settling. It will allow us to lose, use the site for staging of materials, those types of things. And then putting the Class V down when we are ready to put the final touches on it.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted some clarification on where the school is going to be. There is some kind of grading that needs to be done there. That'll all still be happening, the same as what it originally was in the amendment or in the agreement?
So in the original purchase agreement, we have an elevation map. And so everything will be to the elevation specified in the purchase agreement.
Mary?
Well, first of all, I know I sent in quite a number of questions about this and I appreciate everyone also reading those questions and the responses. And the response was very timely. The one outstanding question is the, well, actually I had two outstanding questions. And I asked about the grading for 156th and the the cost estimate for that. But I also asked about the excess material. And you kind of alluded to the fact of the rain and the weather.
Right.
The cost of moving that obviously increases with that pooling as well as repurposing of that material for the grading of 156th and the other and the other parking lot. So can you kind of go into a worst case and a best case scenario for that?
So I think one of the questions you were, the question you were talking about is kind of the force majeure, things that are outside of our control. So in our purchase agreement, we do have language in there on force majeure as far as, you know, if there's weather, we're going to be working within the weather to ensure that we get the site to a place that that we can use it. And so none of us have control on weather, which is why we also have that December 15th date for when the site is fully restored. And so best case scenario is that it would stop raining here soon and they could get the site restored and reclaimed fairly quickly. Unfortunately, we know that the weather doesn't always play nice. But I know they're really, they're committed to the deadlines that are in there and committed to restoring the site to a place that 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 we can take ownership of it upon the closing date.
So let's say hopefully this doesn't happen. We don't have another snowstorm on Halloween or anything like that. But let's say that that does happen. Do we have any type of contingency plans for that to still make the date? Or do we just assume the cost?
Well, we also have, so our, the dates that are in the the purchase agreement are that are that December 15th. And so, you know, their, their goal is to to have that the hole reclaimed here within the next couple of weeks as well as then working on the excavation part. And so this amendment does allow that timeline to move faster because of the material that's currently on site. So this benefits us, benefits the district and PLA frankly, for being able to use those, use the aggregate that's on the site there to be able to to fill that and reclaim that. It's like anything, you know, we have to take it a day at a time and and we have to take what the weather will give us. Our closing date is later next spring. Also, what's what's beneficial here to the district, even under the worst case scenario, our building concept where we're, we're anticipating where the, what the site will be is not a portion where we're filling up. And so upon excavation, we're actually getting the elevation to that place where all the settling should have occurred with minimal site prep. And then we're able to focus on the building, which is the real timely part that we need to get to constructing.
So with that, and one of the other pieces of this contract is that we're not asking PLA to remove any excess material. You kind of alluded to this and I and I asked it, but I'm not quite sure I got a clear question in my written questions last week, which was basically, do do we plan on being able to use all that excess material, which is why we chose not to have it removed? I mean, is there, we're removing filler out of the, out of the pad there for the building and then we're not having them remove any extra that's left over from the filling into the other areas? And we're planning on using that for not only the parking lots, but also for the Class V on top?
So the, the way the the amendment is, is that it benefits the district that we have that choice.
Okay.
So the Prior Lake Aggregates, if the district deems that we want the excess material gone or we want, they'll take it and that's something that we do not have to pay for. We would pay for the transporting of the aggregate to their site, but not the actual aggregate, which is another cost savings to the district if there is excess material. And so we can make the best determination at the time as far as the excess material, if there's a use for it or if it's something that we want to to move off the site.
Are we required by any type of, you know, city ordinance or anything like that? If we did have excess, we could leave it there for potential future use for something else? Or do we have to move it?
Time of development, I think we have that right?
Okay, good.
Like a borrow pit or destroying excess soil?
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, we have a, do we have a motion? I forget. Okay, we do have a motion and a second. So all those in favor of the amendment to the PL SAS and PLA agreement signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, that passes 5-0.
All right, thank you. Our next topic that we have is on Bridges Area Learning Center project. This is a project that we opened bids a couple of weeks ago. We had a huge, we had a very good bidder turnout for the ALC. Also, we had some portions of the project come in within or under budget. We had some projects come in over budget. And so tonight, we're here with Jeff Martin from Nexus and Jim to talk about what we're seeking board approval on, on those components of the ALC. We would like board action on, which are the beginning parts of the project. The general contracting bids were the, were the components that were over budget. And so we spent some time re-engineering and re-looking at some of those components of the project in order to bring that back within to our budget scope. With that, I'll turn it over to Jeff and Jim to check over the details.
Thank you. Good evening. The award letter you have in your packet is for bids. Work Scope number one, Earthwork to Lloyd's Construction Services. Work Scope two, Site Utilities to Cuskey Construction. Work Scope three, Paving and Curbs to Batiminas Roadways. Work Scope four, Aggregates to Foundation Services. Work Scope eight to Cullen X. Work Scope nine to Thielen Heating and Roofing. Work Scope 13 Electrical to Lake Dog Electric. We are recommending that the board approve those bid packs or Work Scope, part of the bid pack. And we are also looking to reject Work Scope six for general construction. Work Scope seven for aluminum entrances curtain wall. Work Scope 10 fire protection. Work Scope 12 HVAC controls. So in summary, we recommend the board award bids totaling $1,981,537.
Okay, first of all, let's, do I have a motion for the acceptance of the bids as detailed in the memo in your board packet and the rejection of those bids for that Work Scope also detailed in that same memo?
Who made?
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary, are there any questions or comments?
What kind of time delays are we expecting with the rejection of bids six, seven, 10, and 12?
Maybe two weeks. Not bad. We need to get all of the dirtwork utilities and the geopiers done before we can start foundations anyway.
Thank you.
Yep.
So it doesn't, it's a delay, it wouldn't delay the opening is what?
No ma'am.
Okay, confirm that.
Mary?
What's our net with what we are accepting for bids compared to what we budgeted for those particular bid packs?
So you're asking where are we at scope wise for what we're awarding versus what we're bidding?
Yes.
We're pretty much on budget with those.
Pretty much, okay.
Yep, very close.
And then another question was on Thielen. They did quite a few of them, one with, I think that was combined.
Yes ma'am.
We're not accepting the combined bid for that one? We are accepting their combined.
Yep. Work Scope nine and 11, that was my mistake, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's because that's what I was reading and I wanted to clarify. Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, that passes 5-0. Next is the approval to advertise for bid for the district-wide roof additions. Mr. Delwell?
Good evening again. So before you, we have a permission to advertise for bids for the Twin Oaks, Hidden Oaks, Bridges ALC, Redtail Ridge Elementary, Jeffers Pond Elementary, Edgewood-Westwood projects. The idea is that if we bundle the bids together, we can get better numbers. We advertised this week in the paper. Two weeks in the paper. With this bid, it's because we're using Garland Roofing, it's a, it's a mandatory pre-bid meeting. So any contractor that's going to bid this project has to be at that meeting. So their questions can be answered and they could look at all the projects. And we will recommend it to school board November 19th. And then we'll follow the milestone schedules for each site.
All right, so do I have a motion for the acceptance and for the approval to advertise for bids for the district-wide roof additions?
So moved.
By Lee, do I have a second?
Second.
By Stacy, are there any questions or comments? Mary, what if you, before you, can you do us a favor and put up page 103 in our board packet that shows what the additions, the new roofing will be?
Give me just a second.
For us? Sorry to interrupt, Mary.
I have to go out to board book, so just allow me just a minute here.
Sorry, I should have given you a heads up. Maybe while he's doing that, Mary, is your question, Abo?
It's not related to the picture.
Okay, so why don't you ask, while Jeff's doing the computer stuff, why don't you go ahead and ask?
Could you explain the, the quality level of the roofing that we're putting in as it matches the rest of the roof?
Sure. We have Twin Oaks, Edgewood-Westwood and Hidden Oaks are all the 40-year built-up roofs. We've selected a lesser roof at Jeffers and Redtail because if you remember, we're building those to build up on top.
Okay.
So that would be a less, and then Bridges Area Learning Center, we're also doing a PVC roof very similar to the roof we have here.
Okay. Mentioned Garland too. So do they have to be certified to put in that type of roof? That's why you have to have the meeting?
Yes, correct. It's a, they have to be certified by Garland to put their roof on.
Okay.
So we get the warranty.
All right, so when somebody bids and let's say they're not yet certified, but they, is there a way for them to become certified? Or is that like a prerequisite that you already put in the bid pack?
That's a great question. I think typically the bidders that come are Garland roofers. Schwickerts.
Johnny Dulson, former Westwood.
There's many, many roofers that are. We've never had, with the exception of someone who applies EPDM roofing, they may come, but we won't accept an EPDM roof. But I'm sure there's a way for them to come, Garland certified.
Okay, that's, I was just curious. I didn't know if that was a limiting factor and and who can? Because I noticed that even last year with the high school bids, we ended up with the same bidders each time, which is good and bad. They're familiar with the environment. But I wasn't sure if that was limiting our ability to to get better prices in here and what it really takes to become certified.
I can get those answers for you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, I have just one other comment. I asked you to put this up to show you what exactly roofs we're going to be doing. It's on the new additions that we are building, correct?
Correct.
All right, and those highlighted in dark are already been completed? And I know the board has spent a lot of time and long-term facility maintenance money in improving our roofs. So we want to thank you on that, so.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Oh, all right, sorry. Go ahead, Mary.
You know, I, I noticed that we did bid the high school, some of the high school stuff on Minnesota bids and other areas that were not in the newspaper. Are we planning to do that with the roof or is this only going to be in the paper?
Well, the, I'm not sure how it got on Minnesota bid. We do list it on several different websites. I don't know if the Builders Exchange put it up there as an example. We send it to Minneapolis Builders Exchange, I Square Foot, Dodge, Friends Reaper Graphics to advertise and market the project. No bids can come in electronically. They're required in our documents to be sealed and opened in the room.
I understand that, but is, they're on Dodge though?
Yes, they are on Dodge.
Okay, that's good.
They're on the bidders list.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, that passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the addition to the agenda. It's come up tonight because we got some information from our attorney today. So I'll let you take the information. I will preface it that this was reviewed by the Facilities and Long Range, Facilities Finance and Long Range Planning Committee before tonight's meeting, so.
Thank you. So if you remember back on bid package 10, which we opened up on September 18th, we had a question on affidavit paperwork for a supplier. We recently, as well as recently as today, our district lawyer weighed in that under Minnesota statute 16C 285, a contractor must meet certain responsibilities. Contractor requirements in order to be awarded bid for a project to exceed $50,000, they exclude suppliers in here. Oh, thank you.
I think in our board memo that you handed out, it's highlighted there. Does not include a design professional or a material supplier.
Correct.
And at our meeting earlier, before the meeting, Ben's structural fabrication is just supplying the material. It is not considered a contractor.
So they are exempt from that requirement. And if you remember, we did not accept a bid for the steel supply. So tonight, we're asking for permission to accept the low bid, Ben's structural fabrication, even though they did not have the responsible contractor verification because it was unnecessary. The savings to the district is about $10,000.
Okay, do I have a motion for the acceptance of the bid of Work Scope 512? By Stacy?
Second.
And a second by Lee? No, no worries. Are there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Mary.
Just to clarify, particularly for those people who weren't in the study session here, the reason why the no responsible contractor verification is, 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 is okay because they didn't, they didn't hand in the form with structural steel supply is because there's no employees or there's no actual people that they're going to do. They're only going to be doing parts.
There's no onsite labor.
No onsite labor whatsoever.
They're just playing material.
Okay, and with Wells Concrete, they will have onsite labor from that particular firm and they did not hand in the form?
Correct. Moline did not have the affidavit, so we had to exclude them because they do have trades on site.
Okay, you know, we've had this once before, I think even before this. Is there, is this something that we expect the contractors to know? Okay.
And that, that was Ben's interpretation because they're a supply-only contractor. They did not need it.
Okay.
So they did not submit it.
Okay.
But Mary, you're right. I mean, we, we seem to be running into a fair amount of people that are not submitting that form. And I don't know if that's just oversight. I mean, Moline, Moline has done projects for us before.
Yeah. Is there a way that we could actually put as part of the bid pack? We just want it no matter what or is that something?
We have it in the bid pack.
That's the way it is.
A requirement regardless of the legal requirement under AIA or whatever it is that does this? So that we don't have this?
We send a form along with the bid pack and highlight that that they need that for their bid.
We've had two in a row now, we've had no contractors miss it since the high school.
Well, we had one, one time, I think last year, I think someone that missed it too.
Oh yeah, we've had previously, before the high school, we've had some that missed it as well. But we have it in instructions of bidders, the ad for bid, the bid form itself clearly lays it out. Again, this contractor knew he was a supply-only contractor and was exempt, so he chose not to submit it. Even though we require everybody to do it.
I'm just wondering if there's a way that, because obviously we had a bid on this, we could have gone forward with it, we had a lower bid one time last year, we could have moved forward with that, and then this one. Is there any way you guys can think of that would make this a little bit clearer to people to say, you know?
I don't know how to make any clearer, I could fill out the bid form, I guess. I don't know, because it's spelled out two in a row ways, and we provide the form.
I get it, but we are, we are dealing with people who bid quite a bit, so to miss a required form, I'm just curious, if there's, if there's nothing else you can think of, I'm fine, but.
We can think about ways and prevent it.
We can clarify for the material-only guys that they don't need it.
Okay.
So we can do that.
Thank you.
All right, so any other questions or comments? We had a motion and a second, so all those in favor of the acceptance of the bid for Scope Work zero five one two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, that passes five zero.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda is number five, an addition about the middle school timeline.
So I'm glad you asked to bring up this map, the area that we're going to be talking about is on Twin Oaks Middle School. This classroom addition, the classroom addition here, which I can't seem to write on it at this point, but it's the area in red there, I guess is what it looks like here. We currently have the middle school projects out for bid, and so they're, the contractors are looking through and preparing the documents, asking questions. And we've identified an opportunity for savings to the district, reduce the risk to the district relative to utilities, and then have less of an impact on student learning. One of the things, what we're bringing forward as an update this evening is we're going, we'd like to be amending the middle school construction timeline to postpone that Twin Oaks Middle School classroom addition to later in, start spring into the summer.
Right after school's out, sorry.
Right after school is out, so that we do that during summer. Couple reasons there, contractors will not be preparing for winter conditions, which will be a cost benefit to the district. Second of all, this area of Twin Oaks Middle School has a significant amount of utilities coming into the building, as well as the district's main fiber hub. If there was any issues with the construction that would compromise the fiber, it would have some very serious ramifications to our ability to do business district-wide, from a learning standpoint, as well as from a district standpoint. And then finally, because this addition is adjacent to current classrooms, all of those classrooms would have to be, from the windows, would have to be boarded up. There'd be significant amount of construction happening outside with foundation, excavation, building, which would have some disruptive qualities to the learning environment. And so we are looking to amend that middle school construction timeline, and as a result, all of the other additions, renovations at Hidden Oaks and Twin Oaks would open fall two thousand nineteen. With this amendment to the construction timeline, we would anticipate opening the classroom addition at Twin Oaks three months later, so it would be in December of two thousand nineteen.
Okay. I think this is. Yeah, it's an update, so there's no official action request by the board, so. So I'll open up the session for any questions, are there any questions?
Not for me, no.
Mary?
What does this do to the end timeline, will we still have the classrooms in time for the next school year?
So we will have the classroom additions on the middle school at Hidden Oaks Middle School. All the kitchen, cafeteria, auditorium, fayed flex space, the locker room here will all be done prior to the start of the school year, or in preparation for the start of the two thousand nineteen school year. This is a ten classroom additions, which would be open three months later than the start of the school year. And so we would be working within the schedule, obviously, to have students in the classrooms that we have, including the new ones at Hidden Oaks. And then as they're opened up, we would have students and staff move into them mid-year.
Okay, so when you were talking about boarding it up and all that, that will still happen then, three months into the next school year, just not three months into the previous school year?
Most of the construction would happen in the summer when school is not in session.
The heavy construction would happen while we were unoccupied.
Yes, and so that was, that's the reason for, you know, boarding up the windows because of the heavy construction, those types of things, and then tying the building and the addition together.
So what is the net impact three months into the next school year to the students without, while you're still finishing up those ten classrooms?
As far as an educational standpoint, so.
As far as disruption?
Disruption, so we, obviously there would be construction happening to finish out the work, but they would largely be inside. Finishing the, you know, getting the furniture, getting all those things moving, which would be less disruptive.
I mean, we'll still be doing some drywall, some painting, there'll be dust, spells, sounds. We can't get away from that, but it'll be significantly less than if we were running an excavator right outside the window.
That's my next question, large equipment, potential safety issues is.
They'll be largely gone by that point.
They'll be gone by that point, you're doing all internal, okay.
Not completely, but.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to make a couple points, in that area is a nexus of gas, water, sewer, our fiber optic loop, as you mentioned, plus the hydronic loop. As you mentioned, that is used to heat our boilers.
And a fuel oil tank.
And a fuel oil tank.
Okay, okay, yep, that's right.
You put that many things in one place?
Yes.
And we're going to put an addition there too.
All right, and during our meeting, we talked about what would happen if we did do the construction in the wintertime and we snap the fiber optic line? What would be the consequence to the district?
So, you know, with fiber being down in the district, I mean, it would impact the classroom, it would impact child nutrition services from students accessing their lunch accounts, it would impact the business office. I mean, we've had, we've had some very preliminary conversations, what if this were to happen as a result of this construction? And I think our initial assessment, as we've talked about it, it would be very difficult to have school. And so that would disrupt the school day from a learning standpoint, and it would impact our ability to really have a normal educational day in the classroom. A lot of things are devoted through technology now, and so not having fiber would be problematic, as well as just the ability to do business as usual.
And we don't know how long that shutdown would be for.
And then we asked, you estimated during the committee meeting about fifteen to twenty percent of the construction cost that will be saved.
We're looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand, maybe more.
Not having to heat the soil while the workers are in there, yep. All right, are there any, go ahead, Melissa.
You mentioned something about fuel oil, fuel oil being stored in the, in the area of the new classrooms?
We have some underground fuel storage for boilers. An advantage to that is that if we can run fuel oil when our gas company says, when it's really cold in the wintertime, switch fuel oil, we save money year-round. We have it at virtually every other school.
Where is it usually stored at the other schools, is it?
Underground, near the loading dock, or, you know.
Okay, so it's underground, right there in that area, okay. Thank you, I was concerned that it was on ground, okay, thank you.
All right, so thank you for that update, I don't know if all of you got in your packet the updated Gantt chart that shows the change in the construction? If not.
No, we didn't get it.
We can, we can provide that, I didn't make copies of that.
Okay.
We will provide that.
Could you do that for us then?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can it be added to the board packet?
Sure, once we, yes, we'll have Martha add it to the board packet, and we'll send it out to you as well.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Next on the agenda is budget and enrollment, Executive Director of Business Services, Ms. Sink.
Good evening, tonight we have Dennis Hookerbean and John Laurentini from Clifton-Larsen Allen here to discuss our audit. And so I will let them come up and go through this.
The presentation is, yes.
Thanks for having us back, you'll recall, I was here a couple of weeks ago in a work session to present this in more detail than what we're going to go through tonight. We've presented, I think it's a hundred and seventy-nine pages of information between the district's CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, Student Activity and Single Audit Report, bound under a separate cover, and then our communication to you as a school board, which is our executive audit summary. The PowerPoint that we're going to go through tonight is just a small piece of the, extracted from the executive audit summary. We're more than willing to talk about anything that you would like to ask us in terms of all of the pages of the presentation, but it's pretty consistent with what we've done in past years. So I'm going to let John walk us through the actual audit results, if you don't mind, and then I'll jump back in when we get back into some of the audit results.
I'll go over the audit results and just a little bit of information on the audit timing. So we usually have a week of audit field work, and that occurred at the end of July. And I believe this is actually one of the earliest board meetings we've presented to, for you guys in the past few years. So definitely appreciate the efforts from Julie and Michelle and Andrea and everyone in their staff for their hard work, being prepared for the audit. Our audit opinion was a, an unmodified audit opinion, it's the best you can get, it means that there are no material misstatements to the financial statements. We also issue a yellow book opinion, this is on district compliance with laws, grant agreements, anything that would affect the financial statements. And there were no findings related to that. We also issue a letter, an internal control letter, and we did have one finding, but this is a finding that's consistent with prior years. It's just for the reliance on the auditors for drafting the financial statements and the note disclosures. So that is a consistent finding with prior years. For single audits, anytime a school district receives seven hundred and fifty thousand or more in federal dollars, you have to have what's known as a single audit. And there's a lot of rules to how we choose the program that we test for that audit, but this year we tested the district's special education program. And we did have one finding in relation to that program. It was, it was a matter of some cellphone allowances that were charged to the federal program. And the MDE guidance on that is that only costs, communication costs that are solely for special education services can be charged. So that's just a matter of coding that to a non-federal code going forward. The Minnesota Office of the State Auditor issues a checklist of all the statutes that apply to school districts in Minnesota. And we go through that checklist as part of our audit. And we did have one finding related to that, it was related to a disbursement that was paid outside of the, what is defined as the standard payment period by state statutes, which is thirty-five days. This is a pretty common finding, it just usually happens when an invoice is not routed to the business office in time to get approved and reviewed and paid. So that is a fairly common finding. We also audit the district's student activity funds, and the Minnesota Department of Education issues a, it's known as the Manual for Activity Fund Accounting, we call it the MAFSA. But essentially lays out the rules for accounting for student activity funds. And we did have one finding in relation to student activity funds, it was a, there were two disbursements where the student council paid for police, for the sweetheart dance and the homecoming dance. And according to the MAFSA, the district is supposed to pay those costs and then be reimbursed by the student activity funds. So really just a technicality in who made the payment and who reimbursed whom. Looking at the financial statements and new accounting standards, we did have one new accounting standard that was implemented this year. It's Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number Seventy-Five, Other Post-Employment Benefits. And when we refer to other post-employment benefits, this is the ability of district employees to stay on the district's health insurance after their retirement. And essentially this new standard requires that the district book the entire future actuarial liability for that benefit. So that is an increase in liabilities you'll see this year on the statement of net position. At six thirty eighteen, that liability was eleven point three million, and last year, under the old rules, it was three and a half million. So that's kind of the cause of that increase. And we had no uncorrected misstatements to the financials, and we are pleased to report that we had no disagreements with management.
And so if we advance that a couple, John, let's see, that's just like as simple as that. John is the manager on the audit, I don't think I mentioned that when I did, but he's like our chief cat herder, you know, so we've got seven or eight people that he directs some, at certain days when the auditors are going on. But he's developed a great working relationship with Michelle Seifert in the business office, and I know you'd be impressed, as I explained at the work session, how many people in, throughout the district get involved in the audit process, I mean, they really felt, feel audited after we're done. And John kind of coordinates all of that for us, and he, I don't know how many years you've been out here, John, doing that, but we appreciate it very much. So in terms of student enrollment then, the slide that we chose to put in here is just looking at a five-year trend for student enrollment. Served eight thousand six hundred and seven students for the year, which is two point six five higher than the prior year. The real story, I think, of student enrollment here at Prior Lake though, is your open enrollment impact, we didn't include that graph, but it is in the executive audit summary for anybody that wants to access that. So for two thousand eighteen, you had open enrollment in of one thousand thirty-four, while you had open enrollment out of six hundred and ninety-three. So the proportion of attracting students continues to be much stronger than what you're losing to other school districts, so still very commendable. In terms of general fund operations, we're looking back the past five years, and again, very, very good operating results over these past five years. And as I told you at the work session, I mean, those results don't just happen. The unassigned category of fund balance went from ten point eleven percent at two thousand seventeen to ten point one nine percent at the end of two thousand eighteen, so. And you do have a very consistent portion of assigned fund balance, so assigned is just a category of stated intent at a point in time that you've given the authority to the superintendent and the executive director of business services to determine how much of your unassigned category of fund balance to publicly state as what the intended use of that is. But it's been very consistent, but it doesn't tie your hands anything beyond a stated purpose of an intent at a point in time, so you can certainly make different decisions about how you utilize that. But in terms of budget to actual, total audit revenues came in at ninety-two million, ninety-two point three million in the general fund, based on a budget of ninety-one point one million for a variance of about one point one five million, or about one point two six percent. Again, good outcomes in terms of the fact that the actuals came in higher than the actual border proof budget. So on the total expenditures, came in at ninety-one point four six million, on a budget of ninety-two point seven million, for net variance of one point six seven million or one point three seven percent under the border proof budget. So again, pretty consistent though in terms of what your operating results have been. In terms of governmental accounting, you always want revenues to come in slightly higher than what you planned for, and, you know, ideally keep your expenditures slightly under what you had planned for, for the year-end results as well. So both of those went in the right direction from an auditor's point of view. Terms of general fund revenues, five-year historical trend, pretty much lined up pretty closely to the enrollment growth of the district. And then the legislature's been providing about a two percent funding for a million improvement pretty consistently over the last, I think, four years. Did want to point out in two thousand fourteen, the jump from seven point four million for property taxes up to thirteen million. That was a one-time thing where the legislature uses that tax shift mechanism to balance the state's budget. So when they repay that, that line item goes down, that was not some significant new tax increase on local taxpayers, that was just an accounting shift, that mechanism the legislature uses, like I said. So for the last four years, the percentage of revenue derived from the four categories has been pretty consistent. For two thousand eighteen, local property tax has made up about fifteen percent of the general fund revenue. State sources represented about eighty percent, federal sources represented is two percent, and about twenty percent of audit effort, coincidentally, even though it's only two percent of general fund revenue, it's probably a good twenty percent of audit effort, so if that makes sense, I'm not sure how it does. But the other thing in terms of property taxes, though, I think people always have a perception that they're paying much more in property taxes for local school districts than they really are. So I think when you sit back and say that only fifteen percent of the general fund is coming from local property taxes, I think there's some room there in terms of resources potentially, so, but that's for school board members to decide. The next slide is just simply looking at a five-year historical trend on expenditures per student. Two thousand fifteen was sort of an unusual year, normally the chart for a school district is going to be very much an increase, you know, just due inflationary pressures and all of the different things that are expected of school district nowadays in terms of the needs and requirements that are placed on your shoulders for dealing with students and all the different ways that you have. to expend resources to deal with the issues that kids come with nowadays. But 2015, I think, was a year where we had some unusual capital activity flowing through the general fund, so it jumped up. But normally, it's a pretty consistent curve like what you're seeing here. Most of the increase of general fund expenditures from 2017 to 2018 were mostly in the areas of salaries and benefits. Salaries increased about 7% over the prior year. Benefits increased about 5.6%. And again, with enrollment growth and then negotiated settlements, that's where most of the increases were derived from, from one year to the next. In terms of comparing the Prior Lake Public School District to a statewide average, a seven-county metro area average, and then enrollment over 4,000 students, you can see the 2017 is the apples-to-apples comparison, because we use profiles data published by the Minnesota Department of Education. Not surprisingly, Prior Lake is significantly lower than the seven-county metro area average, and then similar-sized school districts, it's significantly under those costs, too. So, again, we present that so that you can see in terms of the place that you are investing your resources, you're getting by with less being invested in district administration, for example, and you're doing a good job controlling your costs in special ed. The two areas where the averages are higher are areas where it's an indication of the good job that community ed is doing, for example. That's not something, you know, that's people choosing to participate in your community ed education programming. So, if you have a, simply dividing the total revenue or expenditures, in this case, by the number of students served, it's not a true measurement of the community ed program other than it's an indication that you're doing something very successful if you have per-student costs that are higher than the statewide average. And then the other one, debt service, again, obviously with a growing school district, that means you have to invest in facilities and things like that. So, that's an area where you would expect to have your per-student cost be higher than the averages. Terms of looking at total expenditures by, in type of expenditure, you can see that on a final amended board approved budget of 92.7 million, you held your expenditures to 91.46 million for a net variance of about 1.4 million. But you can see the largest portion of that is sitting in timing differences related to capital expenditures. And so, once you factor in the impact of timing differences on capital items, and then the fact that you have site carryover for things that are unexpendated for certain budgets that get reappropriated in 2019, your actual budget variance was much closer than the 1.4% even. So, it'd be a good outcome even on its own, but once you factor in those two items, it's even better. John?
Okay. This next slide is a, kind of a summary of your food service operations only for the past five years. And just looking at your excess of revenues over expenditures, you had a positive bottom line of 271,000 in the food service fund, and revenue was higher by 115,000 or 2.5% than budget. Like Dennis said, we like to see that revenue coming in slightly over budget. And your expenditures were under budget by 114,000 or 2.5%. And looking at the ending fund balance in the food service fund, if you look at that as a percentage of your annual expenditures, it was about 25%, and that percentage has been growing fairly steadily for the last couple of years. So, definitely a healthy fund balance in the food service fund.
And that will be invested in capital needs of the food service program, I believe?
The intent is that they did not spend money this last year on capital items because knowing that we had the building projects coming up, that they would be using some of these funds to purchase capital items such as ovens and those types of things for the new cafeterias and kitchens.
This next slide is just looking at your meals served over the last five years, and looking at the number of meals served, it was actually within 1% of the prior year. So, fairly consistent between fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 17. I also, I think next year, maybe I'll put some percentages in here, but I looked at the composition of your meals served between reduced and free and full-priced meals. And it was actually pretty consistent with full-priced meals slightly increasing as a percentage and free meals slightly decreasing over the five years. This slide is just isolating the community service fund. And just looking at revenues, looking at comparison to prior year, revenues were up 54,000 or a little bit less than a percentage, and were less than budget by 420,000 or about 5.8%. And the community service fund expenditures were below budget by 121,000, but were within 1.6% of your budget. So, looking at budget to actual results, we're pretty close for your expenditures.
Those were the things that we wanted to chat with you about. We sincerely appreciate the opportunity to work with the school district on your audit every year. With that, we would stand for any questions that you might have for us.
First, we will take a motion. Do I have a motion for the acceptance of the audit report for 2017-18?
Come in.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Lee. Are there any questions or comments? Mary?
My first question is, is when was this PowerPoint presentation added to the board I downloaded the entire board book Thursday afternoon, and it wasn't in there. So, we're supposed to have the board book by noon on Wednesday, and I waited till Thursday and then submitted my questions by 9:00 a.m. on Friday. This presentation was not in it, so, and I've got a copy of the download. So, that's just, first statement is I was a little, I mean, I saw it on the agenda, but I didn't see the final report. So, that's just the first thing, but I did download it. I've got the dates for it.
You would have received an email saying there was a change to the, to the board pack, board book.
I didn't receive that.
It came to me, and I certainly have it up.
I also got it, too.
Didn't get it.
You see it, Melissa?
Yeah, I saw it, too.
Melissa? Okay. You saw them? Okay.
I didn't look at it. For clarification, I didn't look at it Thursday.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know if it was there.
I didn't look till Friday, but it was there Friday for me.
Well, questions were due by 9:00 a.m., I think, is the standard on Friday. So, anyways, I do have some questions. Rich, if I may continue, is that okay? As part of the board packet itself, that, the full, the full audit section, just to clarify, and I asked this question during the study session, but it was about internal controls and what your definition of internal controls was, as well as how you tested the internal controls. So, can I, I just want to ask that again, and, because I don't remember receiving a kind of a consolidated response to that. So, is there, could you just explain your definition of internal controls and how it was tested?
And the, my recall of you asking that question at the work session was, I don't know that I ever got to the point where I ever really understood what your question was. My recall is that we had mentioned that in terms of explaining what a requirement of an audit is, was pretty much covered in the engagement letter that we had routed to all board members. So, I'm not exactly sure exactly any more than I was two weeks ago as far as what it would take to answer that question.
Yeah, it only mentioned it in there. It was quite nebulous. That's why I'm asking what the, so, so, there's a statement in here about internal controls, and of course, the GAAP definitions and COSO definitions are operational effectiveness, efficiency, and reliable financial reporting compliance. So, it was, it was buried in there. What I'm wondering is, is what exactly, could you just describe a process where that was done, where the actual financial reporting was tested, other than asking for samples of transactions of existing financial reports?
John, does anything come to mind as far as what Mary might be looking for?
Well, I think, first of all, I should, I should clarify that we don't test internal controls. We're required to gain an understanding of them in the planning of our audits. It's just like we don't test for fraud, but we are required to assess that risk as part of our audit planning. So, as we're planning our audit procedures, we will look at the district's internal controls and gain an understanding of how transactions are processed, and then we will select one, and we walk through to make sure that the district's procedures are being followed. But we do not test internal controls in any kind of a sampling methodology like that outside of the single audit.
Okay, that makes sense, because that's what it kind of showed up in the report, in the end report of the way it was done. And a couple of things, in the, in the input to it, there was the supplementary, the financial statements that were supplementary. Those were produced by the district, right, which is why we have the caveat in the, in the preface of, the district takes full responsibility for the financial statements delivered and the financial data delivered, correct?
Are you referring to, like, the statistics tables, or?
Well, well, first of all, there was the district financial framework that was produced, where it talks about the fund balance policy, the energy consumption, et cetera. Those were all produced by the district, correct?
Can you give us a page reference?
So, in page three of the, of the audit, for instance, it starts there. I'm just trying to confirm, because all this stuff is in the audit, and I'm trying to confirm what we provided to you and what was actually validated.
Yes, you're referencing the transmittal letter, which is written by the school district. It's part of, when a school district chooses to put together a comprehensive annual financial report rather than just a regular financial statement, the transmittal letter is actually a section that would, you know, a lot of school districts wouldn't have this, but you're holding yourself to a higher standard in terms of public accountability. So, that transmittal letter is part of that, and it is written, by Julie, I assume, in working with the superintendent decides what, this is showcasing a lot of non-financial-type things. It's a chance to kind of toot the district's horn in terms of the initiatives you've got going on and non-financial things. Before, we had a section called Management's Discussion Analysis. You'd put a lot of that financial information or commentary in the transmittal letter. Now, because we have the MDNA section, this is a lot of non-financial information about the good things that are going on in a school district.
Okay, and that's what, I was just confirming that, because when there's statements in the audit and, and all that that says about energy consumption, you know, I look through there and I say, okay, did we, did we test that? And we didn't, but that's typical of what, that we have produced from the district. So, I was just confirming that.
This is a little bit more robust and comprehensive than what you'd probably see. They do a fantastic job. And then same with the Management's Discussion Analysis. Anybody that wants a 10-minute or so summary, high-level summary of, of the district's finances for the year, they should take the time to read the, just the MDNA. If you don't want to read 179 pages of information, read the MDNA. Julie does a fantastic job of writing insightful commentary that, that people would find helpful.
Well, that's good. I just wanted to confirm that that wasn't actually audited by you. This is something that we put in.
The transmittal?
Right, okay. And same with the financial section, the supplemental information. Those are the, that starts on page 108 or something like, oh, no, that starts on page 89, and that was all of the inputted financial statements, because those look familiar. And I asked this during the study session, too. All that looks very familiar that you took as input into your decision.
The UFRS codes that are based on the MDE guidance, so that all school districts use the same account code structure. And we've trained those thousands and thousands of codes where they go in the financial statements.
Well, these are, the basic financial statements that starts on page 67, too, those are produced by the district. Those aren't produced by you. I'm just trying to understand what part was done and what, all that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure before I answer that I know what you're referencing. 67?
Well, technically, I guess it's 68. So, for the independent school district statement of activities year ended, statement of net position, that's produced by us, right, by the district?
I think you might be, are you referencing the PDF page number rather than the bottom of the document, possibly?
Well, there's two of them. One of, I believe is, oh, gosh, you're right, I was, I'm sorry. So, it would start on page 30.
Okay.
Because you're right, there are two page numbers. I apologize.
For clarification, in the board book from last study session, it's the numbers with the parentheses around them you're referencing, Mary?
Sure.
So, is that, that's the one that shows the page number on the audit report, right? Not the one without the parentheses?
If.
What do you see, John?
If it's the, the statement of activities and the statement of net position, if that's what you're referring to, I can give you a little insight into the process. The district provides us with their trial balance, which has the balances of all their accounts. And then these statements are the, all of the funds of the school all rolled together, and then debt and capital assets are added back. And so, the district provides us with their capital asset schedules and their debt schedules. And then, based on that information, we prepare conversion entries to create these statements. And so, it's everything all rolled together is what these statements are.
And not reported to the Department of Education, only the fund-level statements?
Okay.
Or UFRS basis ones are sent to the Department of Ed?
That's what I was assuming, I was just trying to clarify. Okay. And then, my last question had to do with, obviously, with the requirement from the MDE as well as the state. One thing that is missing is separation of duties, and I brought this up at the study session, too. There wasn't a statement here with regards to the GAAP or COSO definition of the separation of duties and separation of concerns within the department. I'm used to seeing that. I don't think I saw that last year, but it's also, it's generally referred to in the, in the scope letter. It's not specifically called out.
And I want to think that when I questioned you about that a couple of weeks ago, I think you were reading off of a list of the required elements from an MDE audit. Was that, was there a memo every year that they issue in terms of what the required elements of a school district audit were? Is that, am I recalling that right?
Actually, every year, the, the school board members go to training at the Minnesota School Board Association, and they tell us what should be included in the audits. And I know that the transmittal letter that I see here is a little bit less prescriptive, I should say, than I see at, like, Minnetoka or Hopkins or other schools that I'm familiar with and have participated in some of their activities. So, that's why I was curious. It's not specifically stated, but our, but our, in general, our scope letter is much more high-level. So, that's, I wasn't sure where that belonged to, but again, in the training that I produced last year, they say to specifically look at those areas.
Both of the districts that you just mentioned are my clients as well, so I don't know if.
That's why I mentioned them.
If I would agree with your conclusion as far as not being as robust, or the word that you used, but the only thing I don't want to leave is the impression, though, that there's something missing, you know, and not that you're implying that, but everything that's required to be issued as part of a public school district audit has been issued. There's nothing missing. So, there might be a misunderstanding in terms of one specific aspect that you're looking for, but I assure everyone, nothing's missing.
Well, no, and my, my statements weren't pejorative by, by nature. They're just curious, because this is what I'm used to seeing, and I know it gets called out in other areas. Now, ours is, our, our letter tends to be a little bit more high-level, but I was just kind of curious, was it looked at or not?
Everything that was required to be looked at was looked at. So, I think what would be the easiest, rather than us going back and forth, is for you to send me what you're looking for.
Okay.
Perhaps in, like, you know, like a PDF or something, and send that to us, and we'll be glad to respond. Like, where it can be found or why it's not required to be presented, I, just not following closely enough with what you're looking for.
Well, I, it was, it's just a question, if it wasn't looked at, it wasn't looked at. Last year, when I asked for it, it was out of scope, but then it took me quite some time to find the scope.
But again, when you use words like "it wasn't looked at," makes me, I don't want to leave the impression that something wasn't done that was a required element, because there, I assure you, there was nothing that wasn't done that was required.
I understand that.
Okay.
My general question is, if you looked at things, did you analyze separation of duties at all as part of this?
Absolutely. And I think what I had mentioned a couple of weeks ago is that there's like maybe 12 or 15 different areas in terms of all the different types of transactions that go through the school's business office that have very detailed explanations of who does what and how duties are segregated. That's partly how we evaluate whether or not we have any findings to report as part of the audit. And we use that to design our testing that we're going to do to, to come up with our opinion on the financial statements overall.
Okay, the GAAP definition, and I believe the COSO definition Okay, um, the GAAP definition, and I believe the COSO definition, when you're doing SOX, our separation of duties is making sure that, and this doesn't, usually, school districts get dinged for this, and I think a couple of years ago, there was one. And that's fine, because they tend to have very small departments, so they don't have a separation between the capabilities of the, or the hands-on activities, let's say, at journal level, for the, for a director versus the staff, because it's, they're, they're short-staffed. That's, I was just wondering, if that level, by that definition, was not looked at, that's fine. I was just curious.
We do have some school districts where we've reported a lack, lack of segregation of duties. I think that's what you're getting at.
Correct.
It being common. So, we do have clients that have that particular finding, but here, the only finding that we addressed was the drafting, you know, the fact that you're relying on us to help you draft a GAAP-compliant financial statement. So, we consider that to be a material weakness in your internal control.
Okay, thank you. And Dennis, just for clarification, what percentage of the schools that you deal with or approximate have that same finding, that GAAP finding that you just disclosed?
John, do you have any sense for the ones that you work with? The, the ones where they don't have it typically have someone who came, like, perhaps out of public accounting and has maintained their CPA certificate and things like that. So, it's really just a matter of priorities in terms of, you can have a lot of very talented staff, but didn't come out of public accounting necessarily, or have a CPA-type background. So, those are typically where you'd see that. I don't have a, anecdotally even a percentage, but it's, you know, fairly common.
Question, do we have CPA on staff?
Let, let me finish to see if anyone else has a question. Anybody else? Is that your question?
Yeah, do we have a CPA or people that certify financial backing, background on staff at all?
Well, the last part of your question makes me want to say yes, but I don't think everybody actually has a CPA certificate. But something you said about financial background, yes, you have a lot of sort of experience with financial background in, in their experience.
Do we have anyone with a financial degree or certified in it, on, on staff?
CPA license?
No, no, I didn't say CPA. I, you said no to CPA, right?
Not, I'm, I'm not positive.
We don't have a.
Three, 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 just three accountants in our office with finance or accounting degrees.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I don't really care about the act of CPA, as long as it's an accountant.
All right. Go ahead, Lee.
I just want to thank you for all your work. I appreciate it. Even more thrilled that we had a good audit, clean audit. And I especially want to thank the finance group. I know they put a lot of work and effort into it, and it's very much appreciated. And this year, like many others, has been very successful, and if you please pass that on to your staff, Julie, I'd appreciate it, and to yourself as well. So, thank you for all your work and for the great results.
Any other questions? I will mention one, too, if we can go back to the slide concerning the expenditures, the student comparison, if you could. I don't know if, John, if you're at the controls there.
I thought I was, but the arrows aren't working.
Oh, okay. Well, just to reiterate, and hopefully, the local paper picks us up, that as shown in that slide, that we are educating our students at about $2,500 less per student than the seven-county metro area. Shows a great investment of our community's financial, uh, the money that we do get from our students. We're wise stewards of their investment. And also, with regards to the question of the finding, I think Terry asked it, or Dr. Stallow did, about the one finding that's common for school districts.
The legal compliance finding?
No.
The internal controls.
On the drafting of the financials.
The drafting of the financial statements, that's a common finding in most school districts.
Throughout the state, it would be very common, yes.
Yes, thank you. And there are no, uh, there's nothing that's not included in this, or, we meet all recommendations and requirements of internal audit for school districts for the state of Minnesota with this audit?
Correct.
Okay. And one final thing, I, too, will echo Lee on the great performance of Julie and her staff. And just to reiterate, on a budget of, and you pointed it out earlier, on a budget of $92 million on revenues or on expenditures, we were off by 1.4%, if I'm reading that right, lower.
But over half of that, I think, was capital-related timing differences. Plus, if you can factor in carryover accounts, where you don't want to have a use-it-or-lose-it kind of a mentality, you allow it to be re-appropriated next year, that percentage is much under, well, under 1%.
So, just how close we are and how, what a great job our business office does with respect to budgeting and when, how close we are on our budget to actual results.
And again, I don't know that if I mentioned it, but those results don't just happen. I mean, it takes a strong board to, to give the input and guidance to the business office, but they, they've given you great information. And again, once again, I think I said it a couple of weeks ago, you've come to have no surprises at the end of the year, and this was another year when you're not getting significant surprises, where you don't have the regret of what you could have or should have done differently had you had better information. You had excellent information, and the outcomes are very close to what you had planned for.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor for the approval of the audit signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, that passes 5-0. Next on, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the enrollment report from Ms. Sync, Director of Business Services, and this is a report.
Good evening again. We're going to talk a little bit about enrollment tonight. And, um, I did give the same similar report in, on September board meeting. And you can see, as, as usual, we lose some students from the beginning of the school year until this October 3rd enrollment. And so, you'll see those numbers. We had planned an enrollment budget of $8,746, and currently, as our October 1 numbers come in, we're $8,796, so about 50 students higher than we anticipated. For our elementary enrollment, this is where we saw the biggest change from the Octo, September, from the start of school, was at the elementary level. I think previously, we had over, um, an increase over our enrollment budget of about 30 students, and we're down to three. And so, we, we saw the biggest decline, which in, is unusual for our district. Usually, we see a big decline at the high school level or the middle level, and this year, it was at the elementary. Usually, our elementary parents are really good about letting us know that those students aren't attending school here any longer. So, I believe this is a little bit of an anomaly. For our middle school enrollment, 2,092 students at our middle level. We aren't, we didn't quite meet what we budgeted for at the middle level. We're about 12 students short. However, this is still an increase of 123 students over last year, the number of students at the middle school last year. And if you look at our prior, like, high school enrollment, 2,754, this is an increase as well. I did have to combine the high school. We, I only budget based on total high school, high school and the A L C. So, we budgeted eight, 2,806. Between the high school and the A L C, we have 2,865 students. And so, you'll see, we have an increase of 59 students over our enrollment budget. And this is 118 students higher than what we had last year. So, this is the biggest change. The adjustment in our budget is, comes again at the high school. And those are much more difficult, I believe, to budget for, because we, those are much more mobile students and where they can attend school. So, you can see our Bridges A L C, last year, we had an A L C enrollment of 108 students. We have 111 now, and so, this is a very, um, a program that is consistent year over year that we have 100 to 110 students in that program. And here's our historical enrollment growth. It goes back to 2005, '06 until the October 3rd as of today. And you can see, we've been growing year over year for several, for several years. Any questions on our enrollment?
Go ahead, Melissa.
I'm curious if, when we get an enrollment update, that moving forward, we can have open enrollment showed on there?
If there's a request of the board, I can certainly do that.
I know a couple of us have had that. We've had questions, so it'd be nice to be able to have that at our fingertips.
And I believe, um, I, um, in front of your, or included today was a, um, you should have received our enrollment projections, our enrollment as of October 1 by school and, and grade level as well.
Our class size report is what.
Class size report.
Rich, is that something we could have?
If you wish to make a motion, you may.
I would like to make a motion that we have open enrollment numbers included with our enrollment updates when they come.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments concerning the motion?
I, just, what, what exactly are you looking at? By school, I mean, like.
Total open enrollment, yep, just the total number.
The total number?
Uh-huh.
As to how it changes each month?
And that's what would be much more difficult for me to do. I could probably give you an October 1, but that number.
Sure, we know it flexes, but, you know, our, our overall enrollment flexes as well, so just to have an idea. I've been asked about that before, and I had to look back, and the last thing I had was a, something from March that said November, it was like a year old, so I didn't have the exact number myself to reference. It'd be nice if it was included in that.
Included in the audit is the last five years' enrollment, open enrollment in and an open enrollment out as well.
Sure, but it'd be just nice to know, you know, since we're, we know that, but we don't, I guess.
Couple of questions, um.
Concerning the opener enrollment, okay.
How frequently are we getting the, I'm trying to remember the enrollments, every other?
We typically do an October 1, and then we'll do an enrollment update as part of the final budget in December. We'll do, unless there's big changes, we don't do another big enrollment update until the end of the year.
Questions?
And you're just looking for it as a total?
Just a total, so that we know how many are open enrolled and how many are in district.
Any other questions? Mary?
Just, with the numbers that you just did, that corresponds to when we have to hand them into the state, right? So, you do a count?
We monthly do enrollment updates to the state, or even us, more often than that.
But like, at the beginning of the year, you do a count, you do, you tag, and you have got to send this up to, and then you have to have your final one done like a couple of weeks ago or last week or something like that for an estimate, and then you redo the estimates, hand them in in January or something? I, I remember you explained this schedule to us once.
That is much more often than that. There's certain, very particular times that we, they look at certain things, but we actually are submitting things almost on a weekly or every other week to the Department of Education on enrollment.
Are there any other questions? I just want to reference that, whether a student is an open enrollment student or an in-district student is, there are students. There are linkers, there are students, so.
Of course.
Okay.
I get that, I just want to, I think we did get this once before by grade level or something like that, and I don't think we got it last year, so I, I would, I don't think there's an issue with it, so I would go for it.
All right, so, we have a motion and a second for the inclusion of total open enrollment students at the next enrollment update. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, that passes 5-0.
That's all I have.
All right, you have one more question concerning, go ahead, Mary.
You know, obviously, we've got transition years, Julie, between middle school, sixth grade and ninth grade. And, you know, I was just looking at some of the trends. According to the M D E, we, well, I'm looking at, they do separate it out by, by open and whatever, so let me add this together. But the bottom line is, is that we usually experience a huge increase going into sixth grade, and then again, going into ninth grade.
That's correct.
Do we ever get stats from, let's say, the, the transition schools like St. Mike's and Aspen to kind of get an, an idea of what to expect, especially as those grades increase?
Aspen goes through eighth grade, and the same with St. Mike's. They both go through eighth grade, and, and so, when we go through an enrollment for ninth grade, we do have our counselors work with the St. Mike's and the Aspen students if they plan to attend school here. So, that information we do get. Sixth grade, we do not, because those schools both have classes through eighth grade, grade levels.
No, I'm not sure about this, because I don't have any stats, but we also get a large portion of those kids moving into middle school earlier than eighth grade, from what I understand. And I just didn't know if we had anybody understanding that trend or, or working with the schools at that time for that transition. So, we had a better idea of, of what we were going to expect during these transition years?
There's three reasons that we, well, two, really, that we get students coming in at sixth grade. And a lot of that, some of it may have to do with the transition, either from Aspen or from St. Mike's. But the other reason, and we've talked about this several times, is that we aren't always a first-time homebuyer community. And so, we see a lot of students coming in at sixth grade, because that's when they're moving to middle school. It's a good transition time for parents to be moving from one school to another. And so, we may see a lot more students coming in at sixth grade, coming into our middle schools, because they're moving into the district. So, we've found that those are the reasons they're coming to our district at sixth grade.
All right, any other questions on the enrollment update? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is transportation update and approval. Director of Operations and Transportation, Mr. Delwoll.
Good evening again. I am seeking approval for right-turn lane stops. I have a memorandum to the school board. It's an annual review and approval by the school board, Minnesota Statute 169, dot 443 subdivision 3. This is, again, an annual review. I have listed the turn lane stops that we would like to, permission to stop in. Again, we have probably 25 such stops. Burnsville's got, I think last time I checked, it was in the hundreds. We don't take it lightly. It is the safest alternative. I know that seems counterintuitive. In, in a perfect world, everybody would see the flash alarm and they would stop. I can tell you that does not happen. And the worst thing I could see is that a car swings around the right side of a bus and plows into a bunch of kids. This is the safest alternative. And with that, I'm looking for permission to accept these stops.
All right, do I have a motion for the approval of the bus stop protocol for buses in right-hand turn lanes?
It's a motion.
By Melissa, do I have a second?
Second.
By Stacy, are there any other questions or comments? I will make a comment again, this is, at those intersections listed where the school bus pulls completely off the road into the right-hand turn lane.
Correction, not an intersection, not necessarily an intersection, it's a right-turn lane.
Thank you for clarifying. But they pull completely off the road into a right-hand turn lane, and students get off and exit to the right, they do not cross the street.
And the bus flashes yellow amber lights instead of red, stopping.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Lee?
Um, had, did you have any incidents or near misses or anything last year with this new?
No, not with this one, we haven't, but every year, we do have motors that fly by a school bus stop sign, every year.
Okay, and you said the amber lights are there, my tendency would be to stop anywhere, we are still supposed to stop, is that correct?
No.
We don't have to?
No.
Okay, I would still stop. Okay.
But you don't stop.
Yes, exactly.
And, go ahead, Mary.
Um, you know, one of the concerns that I had was that kids were trying to cross the road at some point in time. Is, are there, are, when it stops in the right-hand turn lane, is it stopping for literally both sides?
No.
It's just only?
It's a right-hand out at that point.
Okay, okay.
And, and we try in general the right-hand out, so that we don't have kids crossing the road, and especially not on busy roads. We do not do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, that passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the approval of adding an additional bus. Mr. Delwoll, again.
Thank you. I am, again, looking for permission to add another school bus. Last year, we added two based on our budget assumptions. We knew we were growing, so the board approved two buses, and I thank you for that. We, we do need another school. We, we do need another school bus to address capacity in our fleets. We have buses that are approaching 60, 65 students, and that becomes issues for us.
All right. Do I have a motion for the approval of the adding of an additional bus?
So made.
By Lee and seconded by Melissa? Are there any?
Three.
What's that? Oh, it was Mary. Okay. Get that, Martha. Okay. Are there any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a note that we talked extensively about this and it's been discussed and we know it is very important, so, very important, no doubt.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
No, but thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes five zero. Next on the...
Could I have just one more thing, just real quick, as long as we talk about transportation? We alerted the parents and principals today that starting tomorrow, Fishpoint Road's going to have some construction at Huron and Fishpoint. At some point, there'll be a closure on Fishpoint. Just an FYI, that's going to create some real issues for not only us and transportation, but parents at that middle school. And since we run on tiers, anything that happens at the middle school has a good chance of trickling back to the other school sites. So we have sent out a notice to parents. We are working with the city to get the best information we can. Thank you.
One question, or what?
It was a statement.
No.
Oh, it's just an FYI.
Just an FYI report. All right.
Are we doing any mitigation for that, or is there anything we can do, Jim?
We're, we're routing away from that, but the amount of volume of traffic that's there is just...
Just going to be, okay.
It's, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is setting the election canvass date presented by Dr. Stallow.
Excellent, as you know, board members, we will need to set a date to canvass the results after the general election. We've got a few parameters. It needs to be between the third and 10th day following the election, so sometime between November 9th and November 16th.
I'd like to suggest the next day.
It can't be. It has to be between the third and the 10th, it looks like.
Actually, it's not the next day, it's the 9th.
You meant the first day that we can.
Yes. 7:00 AM?
7:00 AM or something, or what?
I would agree with that. Friday, the 9th?
Yeah.
All right. What date is it?
The 9th.
Friday, the 9th.
Number 9. Yes, okay, November 9th, Mary? Friday morning? Okay. Friday morning, November 9th, 7:00 AM. Do we need a motion and a second? I do believe we do. Do I have a motion to set the canvassing date for the election on November 9th at 7:00 AM?
So made.
By Stacy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary, all those in favor, or, excuse me, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes five zero. Next on the agenda is the policy. The second and final readings of the policies listed presenting tonight is Superintendent Dr. Stallow.
Excellent, thank you very much. The three policies before this evening were reviewed at the September 24th Board Work Session. Policy 303 is the School District Administration, Policy 30, or 301, excuse me, Policy 303, Superintendent Selection Process, and Policy 306, Administrator Code of Conex, Code of Ethics. We did review these and there are minor changes aligned to the MSBA model policy that we are suggesting in Policy 301. There's really no changes in Policy 303, and again, very minor changes in Policy 306 that align with the MSBA model policy. So I'd entertain either these separately for seeking approval or together.
I will look to the board, what would the board...
Together, Sean.
Together. I will accept a motion for the acceptance of policy for the second and final reading for Policy 301, 303, and Policy 306. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
And Lee, any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That passes five zero. We're on to administrative superintendent reports.
Excellent, thank you. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. Our collective work is focused on that mission, and tonight I'd like to update you on a couple of events and staff recognitions. First of all, Prior Lake Chamber will be hosting the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools School Board Candidate Forum. Their candidates have been invited to participate in this forum on October 11th from 7:00 to 8:30 at the Prior Lake City Hall. It's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and will be televised live on the City of Prior Lake's cable channel. So that is an event coming up. The other event I'd like to talk a little bit about is I'd like to be sure to invite all board members, parents, staff, students, and community members to participate in our strategic plan review on November 1st. We'll review progress on district work aligned to our strategic directions and collect input from stakeholders to inform our work moving forward. This night is open to anybody in the public who would like to attend. We're just asking for an RSVP to Martha Walz, and we're trying to communicate this as much as possible to our community. It will take place from 9:00, or from 5:00 to 9:00 PM at Prior Lake High School again on November 1st, and we'll continue to publicize that. And finally, there's two staff members I'd like to highlight some recognitions on. First of all, Maureen Mullin, our Assistant Director of Operations, has been named the Facilities Professional of the Year by the Minnesota Educational Facilities Management Professionals Association. Maureen was honored last Thursday night. She is the first female recipient of this honor in the state of Minnesota. Maureen's a very humble leader who does not work for recognition, however, her work ethic, knowledge, and commitment to service have earned her this distinction. She's certainly added much to our team in the very short amount of time that she's been here, so we congratulate her. Second of all, Twin Oaks Global Studies Teacher and Prior Lake High School Football Coach, John Wabi, has been named the Minnesota Vikings Country Financial Spotlight Teacher of the Week due to his service to his students and the positive impact he's had across Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Mr. Wabi will be honored during the Laker game at the Vikings TCO Performance Center on October 12th, and $1,000 will be awarded to Twin Oaks Middle School. So really an amazing recognition to him as well.
Thank you. Are there any administrative reports this evening? Seeing none. Next, our board reports, and we'll start with Charlotte, Student Representative Report.
To start off, I would like to talk about our homecoming week, which was very successful. We had over 1,700 students attend the dance and buy tickets. This, this participation levels also were shown through the Powderpuff and Powderpoof Coronation and the football game where we beat Burnsville. To continue on with this month, we have the TCO, TCO game, which is on October 12th. Today, if you walked into the school, you saw a large line of students waiting in line just to buy their tickets for the game, so many students are very excited for that. To continue on, our council is working on new things to increase our climate and positivity in our school, including like staff appreciation, honoring students on their birthdays, creating more ways to be eco-friendly, like in placing garbage cans in our parking lots. Other than that, we're working on new ways to do community service and service projects, fundraising, and our new fundraising goal for this year is to help out Special Olympics Minnesota. So, that's where we're at.
Are there any other board reports? Mary?
Southwest Metro had their annual gala on Friday. I couldn't make it this year, but I heard it was a resounding success. People dressed up in their favorite golf outfit and were given prizes as a result, and it's probably one of the reasons why I couldn't make it, because I don't have a golf outfit. But, so, and then the other thing that I want to say is that MinCaps, which I've been involved in personally as well as, as a board member, they are going to have their Taste of Healthcare event on Wednesday, the 10th of this week, and I believe it's being held at 1:00 to 2:30 PM, so hopefully a lot of people can show up and support them, and also support the students that are in this wonderful program.
Thank you. Next, future events, October 11th is the middle and high school parent-teacher conferences begin. October 16th, middle, or, in October 16th also is middle school parent-teacher conferences. October 17th and 19th, there'll be no school for MEA.